Good evening. Welcome to the Tupelo City Council Meeting, September 3rd, 2019. I'm Mike Bryan, I'm Vice President of the Council. I'm filling in for Ms. Nettie Davis. Ms. Davis is the Council President, and I spoke with her this morning, and she said that I could share what is going on. She had a knee replacement a couple of days ago, and the day that she had knee replacement, she was getting ready to come home, and she broke her foot and leg on the same leg. So Ms. Nettie is going to be out for several weeks, and during this time, I'm Acting President. Mr. Buddy Palmer has moved up to Vice President during this time. Ms. Nettie said that her heart's here. I've served with her since 2005, and literally, I can count on one hand how many times she has missed this council meeting. So keep her in y'all's prayers. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Thomas Walker, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Buddy Palmer.
Let's pray. Hallelujah. And gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the blessing you bestowed on us. We thank you for your Son who died on the cross. Forgive us of our sins and shortcomings and where we fail. Lord, I lift Ms. Nettie up to you as we go into this council meeting with her on our minds and in our hearts. Just heal her, if it be thy will, in a speedy fashion, and give her the strength to say thy will be done. Be with the council as they take care of the business of the city with the mayor and all the department heads. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I ask you to face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now call the meeting to order, and I will call on Vice President Buddy Palmer, confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. President, at this time, I would move that we confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Whittington, all in favor. It's unanimous. We'll move to 4.1, recognition of boy and girl scouts. There are none. 4.2, recognition of city employees.
There are none.
4.3, public recognitions. I'll start. Mr. Jennings?
I don't have any. I don't have them. No.
Mr. Bryan?
I don't have anything.
We'll move to 4.4, recognition of corporate Michael J. Summerlin.
Thank you, President Bryan. At this time, if I could ask Chief Florida Gary, Chief Thomas Walker, and Corporal Michael J. Summerlin, please come forward.
Let me also invite Lieutenant Moore up as well. I would like to commend Corporal Summerlin for an excellent job on the morning of August the 26th, 2019. E-911 received a call of a possible suicide attempt from a concerned parent. Sergeant Carter made contact with the parent and once on scene determined the incident was being livestreamed on Facebook. The suicidal subject was stating she was near a lake and was going to drive her car into the body of water and end her life. With minimal information, Edward Schiff began checking all bodies of water in our jurisdiction as E-911 was attempting to pin the location of the subject's phone. At approximately 100 hours on August the 27th, employees from Facebook notified E-911, they received a report of a suicide attempt and gave a location of the lake located near the North Rebs Ridge subdivision. Several units began responding to the subdivision with Corporal Summerlin being the first to arrive on the scene. Upon arrival, Corporal Summerlin observed a vehicle matching the description given out, half submerged in the lake. Corporal Summerlin also observed the victim floating in the lake next to the car. Without regard for his safety, Corporal Summerlin secured his gear and immediately entered the water to pull the victim to shore. Corporal Summerlin was able to successfully bring the victim to land, but could not find a pulse. He began giving chest compressions until the victim began breathing, however, remained unconscious. Medics arrived on the scene and transported the victim to the North Mississippi Medical Center where she regained consciousness later. It was due to Corporal Summerlin's quick thinking and disregard for his own safety. The victim did not drown, and the tragedy was averted. Corporal Summerlin's actions reflect greatly upon himself, Edward Schiff, and the Tupelo Police Department. Welcome me, Corporal Summerlin. We congratulate you for your performance.
I won't read all of that again, but Corporal Summerlin, on behalf of your actions, we would like to recognize you on behalf of the Tupelo Fire Department with a certification and a lifesave award, and issue a ribbon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jess, if you could, please.
Yes, we're moving to 4.5, recognition of Sergeant Jessica Carter.
If I could, at this time, Sergeant Carter.
Thank you. Again, while Corporal Summerlin and the rest of Edward Schiff were out searching the lakes and surrounding area, Sergeant Carter met with the parent of the victim to this suicide attempt. And so this is a letter of special recognition to Sergeant Carter. Sergeant Carter stayed with the mother of the victim until the resolution of the incident approximately an hour and a half later. Sergeant Carter was the calm in the storm to a mother devastated by her child's actions. Sergeant Carter made sure the victim's mother was appraised of all the actions taken by us under her daughter's, until her daughter was located and transported to the North Mississippi Medical Center. Sergeant Carter's dedication, professionalism, and compassion reflects greatly upon herself, Edward Schiff, and the Tupelo Police Department. Sergeant Carter.
We'll move to 4.6, recognition of Tupelo High School Senior Project Group.
Thank you, President Bryan. At this time, if I could ask Brooke Reeves, Reed Murphy, and Claire Kenny, please come As the council and department heads are very aware, the students at Tupelo High School are just doing outstanding things, included in the things that they're doing for the school, scholastic achievement, getting ready for college and whatnot, are service projects that, you know, aren't just lip service, that actually make a true impact on the city of Tupelo, and you see those all over the city. I wanted to especially recognize these three students tonight. The idea of this service project was from Ms. Claire Kenny here, and she was joined by her friends, and they started a recycling initiative. They ordered recycling receptacles, printed instructions, distributed, and collected the containers. They had partnered with waste management. In the end, they collected 500 gallons of recyclable material from just three ballfields. They took the opportunity to educate players and coaches on reducing the number of disposable and single-use drink bottles, using refillable jugs. And I think, to me, most impressively, just because I was never successful in getting this done when I was in high school myself, but I think most impressively, they have started a new club, a service club at Tupelo High School called Waves for Change, to keep this service project going as the years go by, even after they leave the city, I mean, leave Tupelo High School. Don't leave the city. You've got to come back after graduation. But the, at this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo would like to issue the following certificates of appreciation to Brooke Reeves, Reed Murphy, and Claire Kenny for recycling and beautification efforts in Tupelo Parks Facilities and for creating Waves for Change at Tupelo High School to continue the promotion of this effort at Tupelo High School and in the city of Tupelo. Presented this the third day of September, 2019. Congratulations, Brooke.
We'll move to 4.7, recognition, I mean proclamation, recognizing Suicide Prevention Week.
Miss Purley Shelley is here. Thank you, Ms. Shelley. At this time, on behalf of the administration, council, and city of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following proclamation for Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11.1 minute, with 47,173 deaths by suicide in the United States during 2017, whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds, and the 10th-leading cause of death for people of all ages. Each person's death by suicide exposes at least 135 other people with over 6.9 million newly bereaved individuals each year. Whereas in 2017, 445 Mississippians died by suicide, and several thousand friends and family members were changed forever by losing their loved ones. Whereas many of those people who died never received effective behavioral health services for various reasons, including the difficulty of assessing, of accessing services by healthcare providers trained in the best practices. Whereas the Mississippi Department of Mental Health, the residents of Tupelo, Mississippi, and the surrounding communities are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and death, and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths through research projects, educational programs, intervention services, and bereavement services, urging that all Mississippi residents recognize suicide as a significant public health problem in Mississippi, and declare suicide prevention a statewide priority, that they support the development of accessible behavioral health services for all Mississippians, implementing national best practices in reducing suicide risk for people of all ages, that they acknowledge that no single suicide prevention effort will be sufficient or appropriate for all populations or communities, and encourage statewide initiatives based on the goals and activities contained in the campaign entitled "Shatter the Silence: Suicide, The Secret You Shouldn't Keep." Whereas far too many residents of Mississippi die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable, therefore, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, I do hereby proclaim September 8th through 14th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, and urge all residents of the city of Tupelo to learn how they can help, because suicide prevention is everyone's business. Thank you.
And now we'll move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Bryan. As already mentioned, I was going to mention Councilwoman Davis and just echo your remarks on please keep her in your prayers. She's certainly not comfortable for, to put that politely, with her injuries. Keep praying for her for a speedy recovery. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the budget process continues to, I think, go in a very positive direction. Our CFO, Kim Hannah, COO, Don Lewis, everyone in budget and finance has just done an incredible job of putting together a balanced budget. It has no new taxes, no utilization of the city's reserve or rainy day funds, does not incur any new debt for the budget, no new taxes, and it adequately meets the needs of the citizens and guests of the city of Tupelo. We will have our final budget presentation to the council on this coming Thursday. The general fund budget is, I would say, over 99% complete. There are a couple of tweaks and a couple of community service requests that will be made to the council. I'll present those Thursday. You're certainly welcome. Contact me before then for any additional details for that, whether for one for the Link Center, one for Create for the homeless, excuse me, the Hunger Initiative, and then an additional facility for the Autism Center. So those are three additional requests that will be made Thursday. Then the capital plan, again, just to reiterate, going to kind of deviate from how we've done it in the past just because of the, kind of, our debt balance, because we did the arena expansion, which I fully 100% support, but because of that expansion, our debt level is, for the first time in six years, up rather than down. So partially to keep the debt level in check, we'll present a, the 2020 capital plan, kind of pay-as-you-go, what we can afford to do with cash, and then a separate 2020 pending or alternate, and those would be the projects that we'll do in this fiscal year, assuming that we issue bonds. And I think, after many conversations with Ms. Hannah, as far as the financial strength of the city of Tupelo, there's no question we could issue the bonds today and go forward with those projects. Just kind of to maintain that balance, though, it's going to be our administration's request that we wait to some part early in the calendar year of 2020 to issue those bonds to pay for the other projects. That way, we can keep the debt in balance, so to speak, kind of, it won't be quite as good as we've been able to say the last five years or so, but still at more of an even level from where we started in 2013, rather than being several million dollars higher. So right now, even with the issuance of the $15 million in debt for the arena, we're still only $1 million up in debt from 2013, which is remarkable considering that we've done over $40 million worth of projects in the city of Tupelo. So that's a testament to our strong economy and Kim Hannah and her team, but we'll make those presentations Thursday. We should be able to have you to Capitol, the proposal in hand tomorrow, and we can go through that. But again, as Ms. Hannah said this morning, there's no, nothing has changed, other than some 2020 projects are now 2020 pending, just because they'll require bonds to do that, and that's some of the big-ticket items, Bel Air, new fire station, things like that, new sweeper trucks, some of those big-ticket items. So that would, just wanted to give an update on that, and that would conclude the mayor's report at this time.
Thank you. We'll close the regular meeting, open item 5, Public Agenda, 5.1, Public Hearings. Do we have any 5.1A, Public Hearings Regarding Lot Mowings? Anyone here to speak on Lot Mowing? 5.1B, Public Hearings for the Levelling of Ad Valorem Tax for the City of Tupelo, Mississippi? Anyone here to speak? 5.2, Citizens Hearings, no items. We'll close the public agenda and move back into the regular session, and move to item 6, Action Agenda, Review Approved, 6.1, Review Approved/Reject and Order Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Contract to Purchase Certain Real Property Located on Shady Lake Drive From the Elvis Presley Foundation for the Expansion of the Elvis Presley Birthplace Property.
So move, second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Palmer. Mr. Logan, would you chair?
This is some property that is next to the Elvis Presley Birthplace and Museum. The city owns all the property out there. This property was acquired by the Mr. Henry Dodge, and he is, he bought it from the adjoining property owner and is offering us that property for less than $10,000, and we're purchasing it under our small purchases policy to add to the park so that there will be additional parking on the overlook, so that people with disabilities and things of that nature can get closer to enjoying that part of the facility, or park.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 6.2, Review Approved/Reject Small Cell Network Ordinance.
Mr. President?
Yes?
If we could have a motion to table 62, 63, 64, and 65 this evening, we'll be able, I think we'll have a couple of extra meetings and our meeting on the 20th or 17th to take these up.
Mr. President, I make a motion we table 62, 63, 64, and 65?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, second by Marco Whittington, to table 62, 63, 64, 65, under the direction of legal counsel. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to item 7, Routine Agenda, 7.1, Review Approved/Reject Minutes of the August 20th, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting.
Move, we accept minutes.
Second.
Motion by Coach Beard, second by Marco Whittington, all in favor. 7.2, Review Approved/Reject Advertising Promotional Expense List.
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Motion by Whittington, second by Beard, and we have one that is for keep Tupelo beautiful safeguard promotional item at $310. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 7.3, Review Paid Bills and Affirm Utility Adjustments.
Make a motion we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Jennings. The bills were paid by Mr. Jennings, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Whittington, Mr. Beard, under the guidance of Mrs. Shelton and Johnny Timmons. Y'all probably always hear that the guidance are under Johnny Timmons and Ms. Shelton. They come to our bill paying because she represents the administration from budget and accounting, and Mr. Timmons comes and he's there because we pay the bills for the Light and Water Department, and that's why those two are always in there. All in favor? Motion carries. Oh, do they need a hand?
No, I didn't. While you were talking.
We'll move to 7.4, Review Adopt/Reject Resolution of City Council of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi, authorizing and directing there will be 3% increase in the benefit for all members and beneficiaries receiving retired relief and disability relief benefits from the Fireman and Policeman's Disability Relief Fund.
I'll move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Palmer, second by Beard. This is the old retirement plan before the city of Tupelo went on piers, and this group is getting a 3% increase, and it will not affect the mileage rate.
I'd just like to say I'm glad we're able to get it to, I don't want to say old retirement, but it's no longer working, cost savings there, and I think we've done a great job of making that happen.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.5, Review Approved/Reject the Lee County Assessment Roles and Special Assessment Roles for the City of Tupelo. There's a copy on file in the clerk's office.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion by Whittington, second by Lynn Bryan. Ms. Hannah?
Okay, item 7.5, the assessment roles, they were given to us by the Lee County Tax Assessor. They've gone through the protest period, and they have been delivered. I actually emailed those to you this morning, and that backed up the actual estimates that we used to come up with the budget for the year, so they were in line with what we were expecting.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.6, Review Adopt/Reject Resolutions for the Levelling of Ad Valorem Tax for the City of Tupelo and the Tupelo Municipal Separate School Districts for the tax year 2018 and the current FY 2019-20.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Lynn Bryan.
No, it's Mr. Jennings. I know we.
Mr. Jennings.
Marked right there.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I know we look a little.
It's the chair, I tell you. Ms. Hannah?
Yes, this is for both the city as well as the Tupelo Public Schools, and I'm pleased to present this millage to you for approval. It is the same exact millage as it was last year. At 64.10 for the Tupelo Public School District and 32.47 for the city of Tupelo.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to. We'll move to 7.7, Review, Approve/Reject Resolution Of Intent To Raise The Solid Waste Collection Rate.
Make a motion we approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Beard. Ms. Hannah?
Yes, this is, we are actually looking, based on the cost of the sanitation fund, we are looking to increase the sanitation fund by almost 10%. I believe it's 9.39%. That would take the rate from $15.97 to $17.47. The last time we raised this rate was in 2007, and it was a 63% increase, so I'm pleased that we don't have to go up quite that much.
And this is just for the advertisement right now? We will have to approve this at a later date?
That is correct. This is just your approval to advertise, and it will run actually four weeks in the paper, and we'll bring it back to you for a vote, and that gives the citizens plenty of time to give you a call and voice their concerns.
So it won't be any, this is not affecting residents, what do you want to call it?
It is proposing to, it is proposing to increase the residential rate from $15.97 to $17.47.
Okay, I'm sorry. I withdraw my question. I've missed it.
Okay.
All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.8, Review, Accept/Reject Minutes Of The July 15th, 2019 Tupelo Coliseum Commission.
So moved. Second.
Well, a motion by Palmer, second by Coach Beard. All in favor? Motion carries. 7.9, Review, Approve/Reject The Approval And Set The Per Diem Rate For CBB Employee For International Travel.
Make a motion we accept. Second.
Motion by Coach Beard, second by Mr. Whittington. This is to set the travel for a CBB employee at $123 per day. Mr. Coy?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. The request is for travel to Toronto, Canada, for our digital strategist, Olivia Jackson, and also setting the per diem rate at 123, which is recommended by the U.S. Department of Commerce.
Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to 7.10, Review, Approve/Reject Professional Service Contract For The Cesquint Quidic, oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
This is 150th. I tried it. Markel and I practiced and rehearsed on this right before the meeting, and anyway. So do I have a motion?
Second. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Palmer, and I tried it, and anyway, he messed me all up. But go ahead.
Cesquint Quidic. How about that?
Thank you.
All right. Is that enough?
You got it down pat, because you said it the other.
Yes, sir. This is a contract to have an event planner come through and lead us through our 150th celebration, as you alluded to. July 20th, 2020, the city will be celebrating its 150th anniversary, and this will bring on someone to help us to administer all the events and research that it'll take to pull off this year-long celebration.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.11, Review, Approve/Reject Request Of Approval To Appointment Of Pat Faulkner To Development Service Department Head.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion down here, who was it? Coach Beard, and the second was Mr. Palmer. Mayor Shelton?
Thank you, President Bryan, and Mr. Faulkner is here. He has performed very admirably in, I think it was called Planning Department, and at some point changed to Development Services, but with what is now the third floor for over 20 years. For the last, I don't know, five or six months, he has served as the acting director of this department, and everything has gone really well, has operated smooth up there, and he's done a great job. I think he'll continue to do a great job as the permanent department head for that municipal department, and would respectfully request the confirmation of his nomination to this position at this time.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.12, Review, Approve/Reject Request To Surplus Ball Field Lighting, Mounting Brackets To Donate To The Edelwomba School District.
Make a motion we approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Coach Beard. Park and Rec, Alex out at Park and Rec, they are donating mounting brackets only to the Edelwomba School District. That is a common practice that the City of Tupelo has, that we normally donate. We donate in the county, Lee County, but we do donate in the region as well. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I got a call from the coach over there this afternoon, and telling how thankful he was that we would allow them to have that, be of real help to them in the lighting on their fields. So I think it's a good idea and a good gesture on Park, Park and Recreation, and Alex.
Thank you all. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.13, Review Award/Reject Synthetic Turf Insulation Project For The Tupelo Park And Recreation To Stewart Environmental Construction As Lowest And Best Bid.
I make a motion that we would approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Palmer. Alex, would you come up? I would like to explain this.
Yeah, this is a project that is going to be a really exciting project for the city, and the Stewart Environmental was the lowest and best bid. They were the only bidder on this, but this project, the proposed budget was for $2.4 million, and this project came under budget at $2.2 million. And also, for clarification, just wanted to make everybody aware that the $2.2 million was also including an alternate bid as well.
So even though we didn't have one bid, you feel comfortable that's the fair price?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logan, do we need to make that in the motion that we're approving the base bid at $2.147 mil and approving the alternate bid as well for $89,971? Are you good with one?
The motion will be to award the base and alternate bids as the lowest and best bid.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Alex. We'll move to 7.14, Review, Approve/Reject Bid 2019-036 PW Materials Supplies 12-Month Bid For The Public Works Department.
I move we award this bid. Second.
A motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Coach Beard. Mr. Whittington?
Yes, this is a 12-month bid we're asking to be approved, just for our material bid, which is stuff like gravel, red dirt, crush-and-run, stuff like that. We had the one bidder from Century Construction, and we ask they be the lowest and best.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So Chuck, when y'all just had one bid, I guess I should ask on that other. Was it just people just not interested in bid, or they're just not?
We had three approved that showed interest, but only one turned in the bid. So there was others, they just decided not to do the electronic bids.
Okay.
But Century's the only one that followed through and did it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.15, Review, Approve/Reject The Final Resolution Of The City Council For The City Of Tupelo Granting Ad Valorem Tax To Hawkeye Industry, Inc.
Make a motion we approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whittington, second by Mr. Palmer. Mayor, would you like to explain this? 7.15.
Yeah, this is the final resolution for the.
Hawkeye Industry.
Exception of the ad valorem taxes. It's tied to the number, the amount of investment and the job creation there. They've done a great job there. They complied with all of the rules and regulations. This is really the only economic job creation incentive that we can provide, so we provide this to help them continue to grow the business and hire new employees right here in the City of Tupelo.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.16, Review, Approve/Reject Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 Utilities, Article 3 Rates And Charges By Additional Of Section 26-131 Facility Charges.
Mr. President, under the advice of our legal counsel, I'll make a motion we table this.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, second by Markel Whittington, to table. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to 7.17, Review, Approve/Reject Donation Of Sick Time To A Employee At The Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Palmer. This is standard practice in our department that we have through our handbooks, that employees can donate sick time, their sick time, to someone sick within the department. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We'll move to item eight, Study Agenda, 8.1, Review Discuss The Abandonment Of Section And Alley On East Jackson Street Between Church Street And Madison Street.
Move it up.
Move it up. We'll move to item nine, Executive Session. Do I have a motion to determine the need?
I make a motion that we determine there's a need for executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings, second by Mr. Palmer. Mr. Logan, the need?
The first item, and I don't know what order we'll take those in, but we'll have different folks that need to be in both. It's a personnel issue, and that is an appropriate matter for executive session, and then we have an item of pending litigation that we need counsel to guide, and that also is an item appropriate for executive session.
All in favor of the need? Motion carries.
Make a motion we go into executive session. Second.
Mr. Whittington, motion to go into executive session. Mr. Palmer, second. And we read. Mr. Logan, which order do you want to go in, and who needs to be in each one?
Let's go with the pending litigation matter, and that would be Chief Gary, Mayor Kim, and his dying of his air force. And we will need for the last item in executive session, Miss Cassandra Moore, Mr. Dylus.
Yeah, he's there. You can't see him. All in favor? We are now in executive session. Thank you all for coming.